Welcome. Testing, one, two, good. Check mic. It is time for the City of Marshawn City Council Hall Council Chambers Meeting. It's a regular meeting on July 13, 2020. The time's 5:30 PM. Oh, are we supposed to call somebody?
Um, I just, I'm not having the ability to unmute that phone right now. Not sure. Let me see here.
See if it's on. I forgot who we're cutting out.
There we go. Whoops. There we go. We're good.
Got everybody? Okay, good. And I guess I forgot the address, which is 10 West State Street. Now that we are gathered together and I'm calling the meeting to order, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you. Time to read the notice to the public, and that is that the mayor and council welcome comments from the public during discussion of any of the items actually on the agenda. To do so, you have to step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, limit the time used to present your remarks to three minutes or less in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council and not to any councilor specifically, and it's the discretion of the mayor or the council to respond to specific questions, comments, or to have staff respond during the meeting. I think we ought to just post this on the wall and refer people to it. Roll call, please.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Here.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Weirin?
Here.
Good. Full house. Does anybody, well, does anyone on the city council have any comments to make before we start the meeting or get into the meeting? Mr. Martin, you do.
Your honor, I'd just like to share something that's obvious, and that's for the people of Marshalltown have been super all the way along through the aftermath of the tornado and into our present crisis. I've seen a lot of positives in town. I just want to comment on them. It was evident at the softball complex this weekend, people were saying from out of town, what a clean town this is, for one thing. What a welcoming place. That's what we intend. I, a lot of people have gone above and beyond to get us where we are. I had, in my career, working on and off with Volk Rehab, a mentor that said, Bill, you've got to give credit for when credit's due. Give yourself a little pat on the back and then move forward. I think Marshalltown is doing that, and I applaud the efforts that I see and of people helping people each other. So, I thank you for offering the time for the comment.
You bet. Thank you. Well said. Anyone else have any comments to make? City administrator, how about you?
None, your honor.
And, this is one of those senior moments, because I may have done this in a recent, in a prior meeting, so I'm so sorry about that. The people I'd like to call out tonight are the scribers, Matt and Kim. They've been very involved in so many things around this town. As you know, Matt runs Green Products and it also has been a contributor to things around the city. Between the two of them, they have been so involved in the building of the new I. It's one of the three-person building, new building committee members. The Congregational Church that they've each led for years, the Marthol and Thai Foundation. Kim was on the Trails Inc. board, the hospital board. Those folks are an example of a couple that rears two, reared two fine children in this town. They were educated in our public system. They went on to great things, and Matt and Kim continue to be involved in town, so I wanted to shout out to them. And again, I apologize if I did that already. I need to keep a list of these things. That's all I've got for my mayor comments. Let's move on to the consent agenda, and is there a motion to approve it first?
I move for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I think Gowdy won on that one for the second. And, Madam temporary clerk, would you read those, would you read those agenda items for us, please?
Would you like to call roll first?
I'm sorry?
Would you like to call roll first?
A vote first. That would be a good idea. You'd think by now I'd get this. In a year and a half, when I'm about ready to expire, maybe I'll have it in hand. Yeah, a vote would be good. Let's do that first.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Go for it.
Okay. Approve the minutes of June 22, 2020, in the bill list and the amount of $2,393,039.51. Put on file the second quarter strategic plan update. Approval of renewal of State of Iowa alcohol licenses for Applebee's Bar and Grill, El Portal, Midnight Ballroom, Walgreens, Casey's General, Walgreens number 03196, Casey's General Store number 3508. Resolution amending a contract with Frank Swanson for symbiosis public art project at the Police and Fire Building. Resolution accepting and awarding the bid for providing salt for ice and snow control for the 2020-2021 fiscal year in the city of Marshalltown in the amount of $76.51 per ton. Resolution to approve the code building upgrade and facade grant applications for 201 East Main Street. Resolution approving the allocation of $80,000 in tax increment financing to fund the incentive grant fund. Resolution approving contracts for property acquisition, permanent and temporary, and prescriptive easement acquisition and payment for the South 12th Avenue sidewalk construction project number PLT, that is not PLT, 19001, SDW 18002, I believe. Resolution declaring certain property, surplus property, and authorizing sale and disposal thereof of 1984 John Deere tractor, 2550 tractor. Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the purchase of a 2020 Chevrolet Silverado from Carl Chevrolet at a price of $28,544.20 for use in the street department. Resolution accepting and authorizing the purchase of a John Deere 333G compact tractor loader from Van Wahl for $77,850 for use in the street department. Resolution approving contract change orders 21, 26, 30, and 31 for the Veterans Memorial Coliseum, an increase of $22,631.7. And a tentative resolution providing for the vacation conveyance and transfer of the alley herein, described to Jose Angel Regulado and Adriana Regulado, a public hearing to be held on the July 27 council meeting.
Thank you. You know, if we did these one by one, it'd take us till about Thursday. Let's go on to item G resolutions.
Before we go on, may I ask one item?
You may.
I would love it if at our next or in a future council meeting, we could have a discussion of the strategic plan as is permitted, as is presented in the consent agenda, just to go through that more specifically, item by item, and look at items that we need to bring forward and bring back to our attention.
That is duly noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, back to G1, would you read the first resolution, please?
Yes, the resolution accepting bid for the contract for the First Street Parking Lot Repair Project in the city of Marshalltown, Project PLT 19001, in the amount of $981,952.50.
Before we introduce ourselves, Justin, let me ask if there's a motion to approve that resolution first?
I move for approval.
Second.
Very good. Discussion.
Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. Very first point, I will clarify, I set a new resolution at each of your stations, revising the amount of the bid we are approving for. It's actually $961,594.50. We did open bids last Tuesday, and it was rather irregular. Our low bid was, as read, was from All Star Concrete. After reviewing their bid and reviewing the math within their bid, there were multiple math errors resulting in a large disparity between their total bid. Per our contract documents, the contractor has 24 hours to request withdrawal of their bid, and All Star Concrete did request to withdraw their bid. That left us at the second low bidder, which was Construct, and the resolution presented before you for $961,594.50. The resolution in the packet included the acceptance of alternate number one. After review of the bids and tabulation, we are ultimately not recommending that we select the alternate. That's why the change in bid price. And then our third bidder was Caliber Concrete from Adair, and there were irregularities in the math of their bid as well, so we deemed them unresponsive and realistically didn't really make a difference as they were not the low bidder. Besides the math, which I'll try to answer but may need the actual details to get you any, any further details, are there any questions I can answer regarding this project and this bid?
Just a comment, maybe you would like to come to school someday and remind kids how important math is? Really matters in life.
I would also be happy to help your students remind it. Turn your, your math in before it's one minute before the project is due.
That's good, too. Double check your work.
One second?
Yes.
Both of those bids that were deemed withdrawn and unresponsive were both turned in just under the wire.
Great. Thank you.
Interesting. I'm curious enough to ask about which item we, we remove then to lower the amount. I like the fact that it's 20,000 less than what we were expecting to see tonight.
Yep. So, the alternate was for, much like our other projects, the use of concrete or use of asphalt. And so, with Construct not being a prime asphalt contractor, that increased the bid for the use of asphalt. Ultimately, we're going to have the concrete pavers to allow for stormwater to, to drain into the ground in the parking spots, and then we're going to end up with concrete in the driving lanes of this new parking lot. So, we are not accepting asphalt for the driving lanes, we're using concrete.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments up here by the council? Any questions out there in the public? I guess it's up to me to determine whether I think anybody's going to call in on this one, given the fact we've got, what now, six meetings under our belt where we've done the go-to meeting option, and we haven't had anybody, one unmuted call in. I'm anticipating nobody will on this one, so let's go ahead and call the roll.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Okay, that carried. And I do invite, if I pull rank like that and suggest we don't invite comment from the public, if any of you up here wish to do that, we can always suspend for 10 or 20 seconds and see if anybody actually does call in. Or if you have a different sense of the items and whether they might be contributory or not, let me know. Let's go to the resolution, the second resolution, and if you'd read that one, please.
Yes, a resolution to fix the date for public hearings on loan agreements in a principal amount not to exceed $13,775,000.
Any motion to approve?
So moved, your honor. Second.
Very good. Discussion. Diana?
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So, as we talked about in the June 22 meeting, we talked about these projects, the different projects. You can see them on the screen. And then we talked about refunding prior issued bonds. And so, with rounding and closing costs, it comes up to $13.7 million. So, we do need to have four separate hearings for the next meeting. One is for the essential corporate purpose loan, so that would be for the street projects, the airport, et cetera. And then we need three more general corporate purpose loan hearings. One for the trail replacement, one for tennis courts, and one for the quiet zone. So, does anyone have any questions on this?
And this is just to set the hearings?
Set the hearing.
Seeing no questions, I doubt there's public comment on that one. Let's vote.
What will the date of the hearing be?
July 27.
I missed that.
July 27.
Okay.
Yes, our next meeting.
Great.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good. That one carried as well. Onto the third resolution, one ready, please read that one for us.
Yes, a resolution endorsing a community catalyst building remediation grant application for John Blabam doing business as Waxtastic LLC for 18 West Main Street.
Move for approval, your honor. Second.
Very good. Any discussion on this one?
Yes, we do have John on the phone as well. I'm going to find him and unmute him here. He is unmuted right now. So, this is, the next two items are both related to the community catalyst grant, and with both of them, I did attach a memo with this one that talked about where allocations were. And so, there is a recommendation from the review committee to provide a grant of $90,000 to John for his renovation of the store at, of the building at 18 West Main Street. And so, John can tell us more about what his specific project is.
Take it away, John.
Well, I am moving the record store and asking for some help, because I'm not a rich guy. I've stuck quite a bit of money in already, and the catalyst grant is there and available. And I don't take the, the ability to get taxpayer funds, which is what a grant is, lightly. I'm going to restore the building back to its original, about 1880, 1890 glory with tin ceilings and wood floors. It's going to be a destination, you know, place, that's what I'd like to look for. We're going to build upon our, our success we have down at 108, and continue to build from there. At this point, when I've got the building gutted, we'll have a recording studio in the basement, film and recording studio, and the record store and entertainment complex upstairs. Eventually, the third phase will be apartments in the second floor. Any questions from there? I'm not going to stir it at a computer and talk to them.
Let me see if anybody has any questions up on the council, Diana. I don't see any, as I understand it, John, from walking past your business in the past before the tornado, you get a lot of out-of-town visitors here, so it already has been kind of a destination point, but now it's going to be in a historic building, right, right in the middle of Main Street, just off of Center. Is that right?
That's right. And the goal is, is working with other businesses. I've already spoken with them, worked with Arts Alliance, Arts Alliance, lots of things in play, but until I get the building up and ready, I can't do it. But, I'm excited to make Marshalltown a destination place with music, and I think it's going to turn into an attraction for not only younger people, but people of seasoned age, such as me and others. But, I just want it to be a fun place and a, a place that people say they don't have to leave Marshalltown to find something good and fun.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody out in the public have any questions or comments? Let's...
Just hit unmute.
Yeah, I see unmute. Let's just go 10 seconds on this one. Three, two, one. Okay, very good. Thank you, John, for the input. Let's call the roll on this one.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. It's exciting to see businesses, they're going to thrive in downtown and bring more people down here just like that, and that's what this catalyst stuff is all about. Enough editorializing, let's go on to the next resolution.
Resolution amending a development agreement with Preserving US Inc. for a catalyst building remediation grant totaling $160,000.
Move for approval, your honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good. Discussion on this one.
Yes, so this is the second piece of what I was just mentioning. Cohen Esri, Preserving US Inc., who own the Marshalltown Senior Residences Building, had requested some additional funding from multiple areas to help fill a gap that they had, that insurance was not covering for some historic items. And so, at the last meeting, you'll recall that you did approve an incentive grant for some facade and code compliance work. And so, this is, they did request, their initial grant amount was $75,000. They did request $100,000. We didn't have enough funds to fulfill both requests submitted by John Blabam and Preserving US. And so, we kind of split the baby, and what was recommended was an additional $85,000 to the $75,000 that was already committed, and so that gets them a total of $160,000.
Any questions or comments by the council?
Your honor, it's just been really nice to see that building being worked on.
In the back end.
For all this time.
Yeah, the top floor is already back up and framed.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were afraid they were going to cut that floor out. Exactly. Thank you for that comment. Any other comments? I don't anticipate the public rejecting or objecting to this, so let's take a vote.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Very good. They weren't up very long before that tornado hit. That corner is going to be resumed being one of the nicest places, including three, three corners, three parts of that corner that have living spaces downtown with a really neat park right there. It's just going to pop. I'm editorializing too much, and I promised Jessica this would be a short meeting tonight. Let's go on to the next resolution.
Resolution amending a grant agreement for shared wall repair with Joe Botello and Antonio Botello to a total amount of $43,450.
Any motion?
So moved, your honor.
Second.
Discussion on this one.
You learn things when other buildings are demolished, and that's exactly what has happened with Seven and a Half East State Street. When that building came down, it actually was leaving part of the, the wall on the lower portion of 27 North Center, which you can now see from State Street, was in need of some significant repair, as well as then some additional footing work down in the basement to ensure that as things were backfilled for the development on the corner, that it wasn't going to continue to cause issues with the shared walls. So, this revised estimate gets everything to a total of $43,450 with what was approved previously, and my recommendation is to approve the resolution.
Any questions or comments by the council? We don't have a lot of members of the public out there. With our limit of 19, that hasn't been a problem here lately, has it? Any discussion out there? Seeing nobody standing or raising a hand, again, I don't anticipate call in, so let's vote.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
And here I'm doing it again, but Sharon and I were walking by the other day when the owner of the flying elbow was, had just pulled up to take a look at it, and it was, oh, no, it is going to take more work, but, boy, if he can duplicate what he had there before the tornado and make it bigger like he intends to, it'll be another one of those destination places here. Things are on the move. Let's vote on this one, too.
We're actually on to the next resolution.
Oh, sorry. We did that. Oh, yeah, I'm editorializing way too much, can't keep track. Read the next one, please.
Resolution amending a grant agreement for shared wall repair with Win Kaya to $55,170.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second verse, same sign.
Yep. Yeah, so this, this one is the one that's a lot more obvious. It's actually, the, the work has proceeded, but there were some structural issues as the basement was exposed, as well as the upper stories, and so, the scope of work of what you couldn't see changed once you could see it. So, the previous grant agreement was for what was estimated, if the, the wall was intact and did not need a lot of work, that unfortunately didn't turn out to be the case.
Any questions for Jessica?
Your honor?
Or comments? Yes. Gary?
Jessica, now that the walls are almost finished, and I know the, there's still that basement issue, it's got to be, I suppose that wall, one wall at least, got to be taken out. Have you talked to Danny and Garrett, or do you know when they're going to start the construction of the restaurant?
So, there's today, some environmental issues that they're working with as well, and some additional things they have to do on the environmental side, so I honestly don't know. It's not the shared wall situation that was holding up construction at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, your honor.
You bet. Thank you. Other comments or questions? Let's vote on this one, too.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, time for the next public hearing, and what's that one about?
Approving the voluntary annexation of certain real estate known as 2424 233rd Street.
All right. I'll declare that public hearing open at 5:59 PM, and assume you did not receive any written comments to the clerk's office.
We did not receive any.
Let's go and unmute for public comments for about five seconds.
The lines are unmuted.
All right, on to staff review.
Okay. Sorry, I'm going to fight Jessica for the mouse here. Michelle Spahnheimer, again, Housing Community Development Director. So, this is a voluntary...
Are there any public comments?
Let me, one second here to bring this up and... You're unmuted to ask the question again.
Are there any public comments? Again, this is such a good program, and nobody's ever objected to do it in the past. That's, that's enough time. Staff review.
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. As I said, this is our, part of our lead program that we have been operating now since 2003, and occasionally we do have projects that we have worked on where the families, as part of the time period where they're obligated to repay if something changes, sometimes they go through refinancing. And that's what the case is right now. Obviously, with the rates that are out there right now, there's a lot of refinancing going on. So, in this case, the family is looking to do that on their home to improve their interest rate and shortening the term of the loan. The overall amount that we still have remaining on the lien is a third of the total amount, so $6,166.68. The appraised value of the home is well above the mortgage, new mortgage amount and our lien combined, so there is certainly equity there should they sell, that we would be able to recapture that. So, we would recommend approval of the subordination, which would just put us still on that, just second in line to the mortgage.
Very good. After the staff review, it's time for council comments. Are there any? I'll declare the public hearing is closed at 5:58 PM. Thank you. Let's go on to the next public hearing.
We actually have a resolution now with that one.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. I'll solicit a resolution instead.
I move for approval.
Second.
Now, let's, now let's vote.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good, okay. Time for the next public hearing, and what's that one about?
Approve, of approving the voluntary annexation of certain real estate known as 2424-233rd Street.
All right, I'll declare that public hearing open at 5:59 PM, and assume you did not receive any written comments to the clerk's office.
We did not receive any.
Let's go and unmute for public comments for about five seconds.
The lines are unmuted.
All right, on to staff review.
Okay. Sorry, I'm going to fight Jessica for the mouse here. Michelle Spahnheimer, again, Housing Community Development Director. So, this is a voluntary annexation request. When we have situations within the, within the city, or close to the city, where property is being developed and is wanting to connect to either water or sewer connections, then we do have ordinances in place that require a voluntary annexation request to occur. In this particular situation, we're talking about a, a property on 233rd Street, 2424, 233rd Street, so right, kind of out by the willows and wandering through golf course, going out towards Grimes Farm. A new residential dwelling that is nearing completion, I believe, and looking to make connection to the city water availability. So, as part of that, the request for annexation is being presented. As staff, we would recommend that that be approved to annex this parcel into the city. The purple boundary line, you can see here, is the current city limits that circles these three, three properties, and then, and then extends up. It does not include, like Odessa Drive, they're just off to the west. And so, being that it is bordered on, on two sides by the city and within our, our area, I would recommend approval of that annexation.
Any questions or comments from the staff? Any council comments at all? Do we have any agreement that they won't try to de-annex within so many years? Just kidding. Let's consider that the public hearing is closed now at 6:02 PM, and we would call for a resolution approving this.
So moved, your honor.
Second.
Ms. Martin, thank you. Ms. Weirin for the second?
Second, yep.
Roll call.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. And our next public hearing.
Yeah, public hearing with a subsequent resolution approving the voluntary annexation of certain real estate known as parcel 8317-05-200-005.
Thank you. This public hearing is now open at 6:03 PM. Did you receive any written comments?
We did not, your honor.
Let's unmute for public comments for five seconds.
One moment.
Four.
The lines are unmuted now.
Three, two, one. Zip. Staff review. Oops, I'm sorry, was there somebody that actually did want to speak? Thought I heard somebody over the phone. Let's ignore that. Whatever, Abel, Michelle?
Okay. So, this again is voluntary annexation request. We actually began this particular voluntary annexation about a few weeks after the tornado hit, two years ago. And certainly, that was not a time when things were functioning at their best, and Martin Marietta was very patient in saying they were not in a urgency on this, and so we were able to just kind of postpone some stuff for a little bit. And being that we were talking about a couple of different things right now, it felt time to make sure to get all this finalized. Several years ago, about 660 acres were annexed for the Lion Energy, the, the new station, into the city. At that time, there was a tiny sliver, which is literally represented by just the blue line, it's about 20 feet wide, that was not included in that annexation. Since that time, Martin Marietta has acquired the property surrounding there for expansion of their new excavation of gravel and, and stuff for their, their moving phase when that comes. And as part of that, they wanted this little sliver to also be included. So, it is, it is just to annex that little piece. The rest of the property that they acquired is already within the city, so it just kind of cleans up their boundaries for, for their property. They won't be doing any actual work on this, it's pretty much setback for all intensive purposes, but wanted to just clean everything up.
No, no likely objection from any neighbors?
Not that I would anticipate.
Nope, me neither. Okay, any council comments for the staff?
Yes.
Are there, I assume there are no services, water, sewer, none of those? It's truly just to annex the land?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then we get to tax it, right?
Yes.
There we go. Okay, other council comments?
Sure is nice to get those little things off our plates.
It is. It's taken a little while, but, like I said, I was very appreciative to, to them. And Neil is, was going to be available by cell phone if we needed to have any questions, but they've been very patient with everything and getting all that done, so I appreciate that.
It's progress for us, too, and we appreciate their patience, and we appreciate the work the city had to do after the tornado. It's nice to be able to get to some normalcy where we can handle things like this now, too. Thank you. The, all right, public hearing is closed at 6:07 PM. This one also calls for a resolution.
Move for approval, your honor?
Thank you.
I'll second.
Very good. Roll call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Very good. On to item H on the agenda, which is four ordinances, the first of which is what?
An ordinance, a second reading of an ordinance to amend, to amend the code of ordinances by adding chapter 134 Noise Control and amending or repealing conflicting sections. I should note that staff is requesting to waive the third reading due to enforcement issues.
Gee, would that have anything to do with fireworks?
No.
No? Okay.
Loud motorcycles in the middle?
Fireworks are regulated in a different chapter.
Oh, that's true, yeah. Well, I've, there've been about three, three music violations out of vehicles and one muffler in the last week that I've heard. I just wanted to tell people, hey, you better enjoy it now because the time is coming.
Move for adoption, your honor?
Thank you.
Second.
Very good. Any further discussion up here?
I move that we waive the third reading.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Amendment motion, second? Let's vote, well, let's see. Let's, let's vote on the amendment first, and then see if there's any discussion second. So...
So, we're just voting on the second?
Roll call on to waive the second reading, yep.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Very good, okay. So, the motion is to approve it and to waive the second, the third reading, rather. And now, we're open for discussion, first by the council, then by the public. Any discussion up here?
Your honor, chief, if you would, please? Are, are we putting the cart before the horse if we waive the third reading? Do you have the new decibel gun in possession?
Uh, yeah, I think we actually do have that decibel meter in our possession, so I think we're ready to go.
Just wanted to make sure.
I hope I'm not wrong about that, but I know it's been, it was ordered more than three weeks ago, so I'm guessing we have it.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you, chief.
Okay, any other questions or comments of the chief while he's up here, or in general? My watch told me the other day that somebody had hit over 80 decibels, so the, I, the Apple products apparently are set up, I didn't even know that they were set up to do that, but they did. I was told I was going to lose my hearing if there was sustained exposure to that.
If you would've answered the door, I wouldn't have yelled that loud.
Okay, well, let's ask for public comment again. I don't see anybody standing up in the...
Thanks, chief.
Outer areas to run up to the microphone, but let's unmute it just for...
The lines are unmuted currently.
Thanks. And if anybody really does want to speak, speak loudly. That's enough time. Okay, or, let's call the, roll call on the ordinance.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. On to the second one. Would you read that ordinance to one, Abel?
Yes, an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances by amending chapter 76 Traffic Schedule, Schedule 4 Stop Sign Interse, or Stop Intersections, Schedule 5 Yield Intersections, and Schedule 6 Traffic Signals, a second reading.
Is there a motion to amend that, to waive the further readings, or...
We're not requesting any waiver of the third reading.
Okay. And is there a motion to approve the ordinance itself?
So moved, your honor.
Sorry, Isom.
Second.
Mr. Goudy, second? Discussion?
You'll, I'll just say that you'll recall this was one where we needed to update our, our schedules and from what the previous code was, and so, we were able to do that.
Let's ask for public discussion. I don't think we have to unmute, though, since we're going to have a third reading. We'll invite anybody out in the public that really doesn't want this to happen to come next time. Okay, roll call.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Very good, that carried as well?
Cahill?
Oh, Cahill.
Yes.
Sorry.
I'm sure they get overlooked a lot, too. One, Abel, the next one, please.
An ordinance to amend the code of ordinances by repealing sections relating to bankrupt stores and public sales, first reading.
I move for approval.
Second, your honor.
Thank you. Any discussion on this one?
This was the one that we brought to your attention last time, where it's just archaic language that we're really not doing anything with, and it's time to clean up.
Any public comment? Let's call the roll on this one, too.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
And that carried as well, and the final ordinance?
Yes, an emo, or an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances by amending chapter 77 Parking Schedules, Schedule 2 No Parking Anytime, a first reading to remove inconsistent language regarding parking along East Lynn Street between Center Street and Third Avenue.
I move for approval.
Second, your honor.
Isom on the second. Thank you for yielding, Mr. Thompson. Any discussion about this one?
Just the reminder, there was, there were conflicting language, so this change is to take it to what our current practice is, which is parking is allowed on the south side of East Lynn Street between Center Street and Third Avenue.
Now, we haven't had any resistance to this by anybody affected.
It's, it's not changing anything from what we're currently doing, so we have not had any comments received on this one.
Yeah, I'll anticipate there isn't going to be any public comment, although if anybody is in the audience or on the phone and wants to yell at us, you have five seconds. I can see the unmute on. And let's mute all, and vote.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Okay, that carried as well. Now, we go on to the discussion items.
The first item is to, a request to forgive a 2004 loan to West Town LLP. I'll do a quick introduction and then turn this over to, to Jim Clark. Jim had, who owns West Town, Wells Town Apartments. Jim had reached out, and every year, we have this one reminder that usually comes, I think, from your auditor or something about what's the status of this, and so, it's kind of one of those things that just comes up once a year. But, back in 2002, 2004, there was a $400,000 loan that was granted to Mr. Clark for the West Town complex, and it actually started out as a grant request that was fulfilled as a grant request, and then Mr. Clark requested it be a loan, and I think he can provide more details on that. And so, at this time, he's requesting forgiveness of that. We looked into what it was. It was actually tax increment finding, financing TIF funds taken from the TIF district that were then provided. It was not a general obligation bond or anything that we took out ourselves to provide this. And so, my recommendation is forgiveness, that ultimately, if he were to repay it, we would have to return those funds to the county auditor to be dispersed along, or to all taxing entities. It's not as though it would be offsetting any of our debt service or anything of that effect, as well as there's been quite a good history with West Town Apartments being a very functional part of our town, downtown-serving senior residents. So, Mr. Clark?
It's a long time ago, 15 years ago. I, what I really remember is going back to the council and saying, change this grant into a loan. I remember the looks on their faces, and it was, I don't know that I can explain it to you at this point. The project was under construction. It got in trouble because demand from China for steel blew the whole thing to pieces, and it was like it was going to just stop. I had a consultant at the time, and he sent me back to the council to change the grant into a loan. 15 years has gone now, and I think there were some tax losses that were taken over this 15-year period. So, I'm, what I'm asking you to do is help me to kind of put it in a hole and come back out of the hole, so it can be sold.
Any questions or comments for Mr.? I should have asked your address, Jim.
Oh, I'm sorry, 1916 Norwood Drive.
Thank you. And, and I know from the materials that we got that you do have a tenant there, the Bergman CPA offices. We still miss the restaurant that you had there, by the way. That was always a nice, short walk.
Can you remind us, at what, you or Jessica, what the remaining balance on the loan is, please?
It is still 400,000. It was not due until 2034. So, it was set to be a 30-year lifespan, which runs typically with the lifespan of the tax credits that go along with, with some projects like these.
Thank you.
West Town will, I mean, yeah, we've been up 15 years, and it will continue as affordable housing, which means that the people who live there can only make so much. The rents are also controlled, so they can't, so it's affordable. That will remain for a long time.
If we look out the front office of our law building, that is our next site. If we look out the front office of our law building, that is our next site, well, I guess we see the MICA branch office, too, but there's some nice women that call and tell us when we have a pool on top of the office, because they can see the water there.
Ducks swimming around up there.
But I can also tell from looking out at night, you know, if it's nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night, given the number of lights there, that you've got pretty good occupancy, people are living there.
Yeah.
But we've never had any problems that I know of with the facility, either.
And, Your Honor?
Yes.
That was leading into my question, Jim, what has the occupancy been over the years?
It has been really good, it was, actually filled up before it was completed.
And you've sustained that through the life of the facility, right?
Yeah, right at the moment, we do have some, a couple vacancies, but our hundred-and-one-year-old fell and broke her hip. You know, it's that kind of a business, people usually live there, you know.
It's not a high turnover, because people like it once they're there. Exactly.
I do have to comment that it is a beautiful addition to the downtown, and it is a nice piece in our structure of the downtown, so we appreciate the quality of the build that has been there, it's hard to believe it's been that long, but it does have a nice fit into the downtown area, so thank you for maintaining that.
You were kind of the jumpstart on downtown housing, truly. You know, at least in the last forty years.
Yeah, now there's several.
Good for the restaurants and other businesses downtown. Other questions or comments by the council? Okay.
Your Honor?
Yes.
This question would be for Jessica or Diana, if we forgive this loan, what's it do to that TIF in that district? Because that's four hundred now, all of a sudden counts against that TIF, right?
So, so there's basically nothing, if there's no repayment, then there's, the TIF district is what it is, so it's, I don't think we had it ever counting as an outstanding obligation in the TIF district, so.
So it's just a wash, then, if we?
Correct, so if he were to actually give us four hundred thousand dollars, we would have to turn that over to the county auditor, and part of that would come back to us, part would go to the other taxing entities.
So basically, no harm, no foul, if we proceed with this?
Correct.
For any, well, the only harm would be, it'd be four hundred thousand, it wouldn't go back to the schools, or the county, or whatever, okay, thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
You bet.
And may I ask, along the lines of Mr. Thompson's question, that that's not anything we have to work with the county, or the school, or the other taxing entities in the dismissal of the loan, or the forgiveness?
No, this would just need to be something that would come to the next council meeting on a resolution for you to formally take action, so that would be all that would need to happen.
Thank you.
And those entities would have the opportunity to be here if that's on the agenda. Isom? Okay. Thank you. All right, is staff calling for any action item on this, or?
Yeah, I would appreciate a motion directing a resolution to forgive the loan on the next council meeting.
So move, Your Honor.
Thanks, Mr. Isom.
Second.
Thank you, any other discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Very good, thank you, on to discussion item number two.
A discussion of a shared wall grant for one sixteen Main Street, this was requested by Councilmember Thompson, I don't know if you want me to start with an introduction, or?
If that's okay.
Yeah.
I asked Jessica to put this on the agenda, when the Optical Center, when Julie rebuilt her wall, she was being proactive, it was before the state gave us the grant, or the forgivable loan that's turned into a grant, with their restrictions on it, that that money could not be applied to someone who already did the task. I know rebuilding the downtown is very important to us, Julie has shared with me that that wall rebuild cost her ninety-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents, because they had to go clear down to the basement foundation to redo that, you know, and she wasn't expecting that, but she was proactive, she wanted to keep her business downtown, she wanted to make it look nice, she wanted to fix the building, and I guess what I'm asking the rest of the council members to do is consider that people that are proactive and do the right thing downtown should not be punished, and I guess what I'm asking to do is to bring back a resolution that, that we look at the averages of those grants for the other shared walls, and those two we voted on earlier, the prices went up, and Jessica provided those numbers to me, the average shared wall grant was forty-seven thousand plus and some change, so I'm asking that we, at the least, we use local option sales tax to give Julie and the Optical Center half, a little over half of the cost of that wall, so forty-eight thousand, which would be in line with those other grants. I know she's here tonight, if she would like to state her case, I know she'd appreciate anything, anything would help, she still has more work to do on that building, she's done quite a bit, so Julie, did you want to say a few things in your defense, or your?
I brought the original estimate I had on the wall was a hundred.
Julie, you need to say your name and address.
Julie Chasso, from the Optical Center, and so, yeah, the original bid I had was a hundred and ten, four hundred and eighty thousand, and I was very fortunate that it progressed well enough that the scaffolding and so forth was able to be taken down sooner, so that didn't cost as much, and Cheeto worked with me, because he knew it was coming out of my pocket, so he did reduce the bill down to what Gary quoted, ninety-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven and fifty cents, so I had to dip the wall down, because my pipes were freezing, and I really didn't have a lot of choice, so, but, you know, it's, it's, it's something I've always respected, I've come, I live in Marshalltown, and I was born in Marshalltown, and I want to see, sorry if I get emotional, but I want to see the town continue to prosper.
You know, that wall looked a lot like the one at Center and Main Street, still looks, it's like, oh my lord, what are we gonna do with that?
It looked like a war zone, you know.
It did, and it looks so nice now.
Thank you.
It's something professional, it fits right in, and it's got the green space for now next to it, so.
Yeah, and they just finished the back, and my insurance is supposed to help me on that, because that was original damage, but the, you know, wall that was shared, nobody will take responsibility for, so, anyway, it's called plan, not retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Staff asking for a resolution or motion on this one as well?
I'm asking for a motion that would confirm, well, I guess it could be Councilmember Thompson's motion of a grant of forty-eight thousand dollars to come from local option sales tax.
We'll consider that as a motion, Mr. Thompson.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Very good, is there a second?
Yep.
Tie again, but it goes to Goudy on this one. Further discussion?
Just curious about local option sales tax as the funding source, wondering what else we have committed that we might not remember we committed, or?
So I think, just roughly, I think there was about one point five million dollars that you had available, kind of in this fiscal year, and the tactic was trying to preserve that amount as long as possible, I'm not sure of what other commitments are there, but I believe it was a significant number, that really is our only funding source here, to, we could do a TIF grant as well, and use some of that TIF fund balance, it doesn't fit in with the incentive grant program, because the work has already been done as well, and it doesn't fit in with the loan program, so local option sales tax is the funding source that I'm recommending, just for the fit of it, it's at your discretion, and it really, truly is something here tonight that would be at your discretion.
Great, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Your Honor, I would like to compliment you on wanting to continue to have your business thriving in Marshalltown, I think in the past couple of weeks, I've talked with several small business owners who had that same feeling of, what can we do to help our small businesses to be, to continue in their work, and we've had a double hit from the tornado, and then the coronavirus that has especially hit our smaller business owners in town, that maybe don't have the same resources as some of the larger entities are afforded in our system, so I would agree with Mr. Thompson that this would be a good spend of the local option sales tax.
Thank you, Ms. Gale, any other council comments? I suppose we should open it to public comment as well, so if you can unmute and tell me when to start counting.
The lines are unmuted.
Three, two, one, thank you, that's it for the public to comment, let's take a vote.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. I didn't want to interject before that vote was taken, but one of the proudest moments I've had as a city councilor way back when was when the Kibbe Building needed help, and we had such a bad water runoff problem in the alley there, and the city council, it wasn't a seven-zero vote, but it was a vote to help pay for half of the system that they put in now to do the water remediation, and it's now, it was the first in the state, people come here from all over the state to see what we did, what we did, what the owners did there with our help, and so every time I have lunch there, or walk past there, I feel a lot of pride to figure, okay, well, the city helped on that one, this gives me the same feeling. So, thank you, let's go on to the last discussion item.
Yes, discussion of proceeds from sale of fire station, Councilmember Thompson.
And thank you again, Your Honor, Jessica, in this one, I know past practice has been that the sale of buildings, the money has, the proceeds have gone to building maintenance, but I think we're in trouble, probably too strong of a word, we don't know what else is yet to come on the Coliseum project, with that money, obviously, we're gonna approve those change orders, as we proved more tonight, the money's gonna come from somewhere, and it doesn't have to be this, and I don't even know if this is enough to offset what's gonna be in the future, so I guess I would propose that, you know, we basically have this windfall of a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, we just allocate it for future change orders for the Coliseum, and if we get lucky and it covers all of them, then the balance stay at the Coliseum for maintenance, and not go back into the maintenance fund, just a one-time transfer of the hundred and seventy-two thousand to the Coliseum, if that's legally possible, and.
It certainly is, so it's an internal policy that you have that directs things to Fund Zero Three One, the one thing that I will point out is when we were in the budgeting process, we did budget eighty thousand dollars in Fund Zero Three One, so if you do not put eighty thousand dollars in there, then that means that we need to reduce eighty thousand dollars out of that fund, so there would be some additional changes if the full one hundred and seventy-two thousand would be allocated to the Coliseum renovation, so that's the only concern, you know, it's something we can surely do, it's not the end of the world, but that is the one thing, if you do, A, B happens as well.
And if, and, Your Honor, and Jessica, if we don't do this, we're gonna be doing money from somewhere for the Coliseum.
Correct.
We're gonna have, it's a rob Peter to pay Paul type situation.
And I should point out, one hundred and seventy-two thousand is not going to cover the shortfall in the Coliseum, so that amount in whole, we'll still be having a conversation likely with some reallocation of bond proceeds in the future, that was the revenue source that we talked about previously.
So no matter what we do tonight, we're gonna be having other discussions about other, yeah.
Correct.
Before calling for a second, let me just see if, let me open up for discussion up here, if anybody else has any reactions or comments.
So the only question I had, Your Honor, was that if the eighty thousand's removed from that fund in the, in the budget, does that impact any expenses that we're going out this year, or is that just?
You know, I am sure that Sarah Rosenbloom doesn't want me to say this, but as you look at the CIP list that's in there, out in the next fiscal year is an eighty thousand dollar generator for the library, that is probably what we would take out at this point, until we have re, you know, basically reviewed what expenses we had in this fiscal year, and what we've ended up with, and what expenses we still have, the remodeling, the first floor, obviously, has not happened by June thirtieth, and so there's some things that are going to be carrying into next fiscal year, and so there's still costs to be figured out of what that does to the budget, but the easy thing to take out is the generator for the library.
So with that, I guess the only comment I had is that at minimum, I don't see an issue with taking the remaining ninety-two thousand of the hundred and seventy-two and reallocating it to the Coliseum, at least works toward a conversation that we're gonna be having in the future, and allocates money that wasn't there prior to be able to mitigate what that larger number would be otherwise, so I guess I'd be in favor of doing that, and I don't, I'm not opposed one way or the other, I just, that's money that wasn't taken out of any other pocket.
And, Your Honor, I'm okay with that, because as we just said, we're gonna have a conversation down the road, it doesn't matter what we do tonight, you know, no matter which direction, so if you want to protect that eighty thousand and just do ninety-two thousand, I'm perfectly fine with that.
My sense tells me, seeing nods around the table, that if your motion was to move the ninety-two thousand into the Coliseum.
And the eighty thousand into that fund?
There'd probably be a second, then we could expect a good vote.
I would second that motion, Your Honor.
Okay, any further discussion? Again, we probably should open this one up again, just to unmute one more time, let's go, ten seconds.
All lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Thank you. Go ahead and mute, and let's vote.
Before we vote, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Speaking of the old fire station, has that closed finally?
No.
Oh.
Abstracts have been updated, and they're in the purchaser's attorney's office for examination, I don't anticipate a problem there, since the city's owned this property for a substantial time, but as soon as those are done, we can probably arrange the closing, although the closing date was set to be on or before August three.
So Roger, you don't have that money in your pocket right now?
Let's hope not.
Hope never goes in your pocket, yeah, let's keep it out of Roger's pocket.
Because you were sitting kind of off to the side there, I thought you had a big wad of bills there, so.
Any other questions or comments before we vote? Let's vote.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good, that carried as well, thanks for the input, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
We're on to item J on the agenda, that's public comment, after this again, members of the public may make comments on any item that was not on the agenda at this time, you must approach the mic, say your name and address, limit your comments to three minutes unless longer, as authorized by the mayor, speak directly to the mayor and council as a whole, and we shall not, mayor and councilor should not engage in discussion on or debate on items raised by members of the public, and I actually may be taking on them in order to comply with the open meetings laws, with that said, we're open to public comment, let's unmute the mics.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Thank you. This is gonna shock me by now, after seven meetings in a row, or whatever it's been, if anybody ever chimes in on the telephone this way. And that's a little over ten seconds, so let's go on to the next item, which is a closed session regarding real estate.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to section twenty-one point five subsection one, paragraph J of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
Thank you.
Who was the second on that one?
Goudy.
Okay.
Roll call.
Goudy?
There.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Very good, we're down to only two people, no, one person on city left on the phone.